Okay, can I get counsel back? Thank you. Okay, we are back from closed session. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In closed session, the City Council had a discussion regarding pending litigation. Item number one, Yesenia Lopez Vargas versus City of Southgate. This was a claim made by residents slipped on a sidewalk, on a motion made by Councilwoman Avalos and seconded by Mayor Davila, and on a vote of five to zero, the City Council authorized a settlement. The settlement is not yet finalized, but the amount will be disclosed consistent with Brown Act. On item one B, Hootron versus City of Southgate, Bernal versus City of Southgate, and that would be item one D. And item one E, Diaz versus City of Southgate. These are claims made involving accidents with city vehicles against, and the claims are against the city in connection with those accidents. There's a presentation made by the City Attorney on each one of those claims, and there was no action taken by the City Council in closed session. On item number one C, Ana Granados versus City of Southgate. This is a claim of an individual who believes that her car was towed improperly and towed improperly, and on a motion that was made by Mayor Davila and seconded by Councilmember Hurtado, and on a vote of five to zero, the Council moved to deny that claim. Item number two, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. The city, one of the city's buses caught fire, and the claim on that bus was tendered to the operator under contract with the city who manages the maintenance and driving of those vehicles. The city received an offer to settle for the amount of $90,000, which is considered the value of the bus at the time of the fire. On a motion that was made by Councilmember Hurtado and seconded by Councilwoman Avalos, and on a vote of five to zero, the City Council approved, accepting the offer of $90,000 toward, as a replacement value for that, the fair market value of that car, of that bus at that time. There were no injuries associated with that fire. On item number three, conference with labor negotiator, the City Council received a presentation by the agency representative, City Manager Rob Houston, discussing each of the employee organizations listed in the agenda. Upon completion of that presentation, guidance was given to the city manager. There was no reportable action taken. There were no other items discussed in closed session, and that completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. At this time, I'm going to open again to the audience. If you would like to speak on any of these items, please come forward. Okay, be anonymous, close the honest section. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned. At this time, I'm going to be opening the Southgate City Council regular meeting, August 12. And we have for invocations, Steve Costley. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, if Ms. Griegego can please do us the honor to do the Pledge of Allegiance, we would appreciate it. Thank you. Invocation first.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you provide for us, Lord, and for all the beautiful days of summer that are here. We thank you, Lord, for the residents of the City of Southgate and the council here. We pray for them, for the wisdom for tonight. We pray for the students who will be starting school again on Thursday. And we thank you, Lord, for all that you give us, in your Son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mayor Davila?
Present.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz?
Present.
City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
Present.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, we have no public hearings tonight, but we do have a guest. She is our LAUSD, LA Unified School District Board Member, District Five, Carla Griegego. She's going to make a presentation for us.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you for this, Davila. I'm very grateful to be here today and to share some words and some information about the reopening of our school. Like Mayor said, I am representing the Southeast City, the Westend of LAUSD, District Five, and if we have...
Many, oh, thank you. We have many students from Southgate. And so today, before I continue, I want to first...
Ms. Griegego, can you give me a little second? I'm just going to make the announcement for anybody in the audience that needs translation. ¿Alguien necesita traducción en español? Por favor, mantengan su mano arriba para que se les dará un audífono. Mantengan su mano arriba si necesitan la traducción. Gracias. Manténgala arriba, no la baje. Thank you, Ms. Griegego. You can continue.
Okay. So before I continue, I want to first acknowledge the pain and the suffering and the fear that our communities have endured and experienced in the past couple of months, especially in the southeast cities. Like many in our communities, I am outraged by the inhumane attacks on our immigrant communities across Los Angeles during the last couple of months. We've seen how children and parents have been racially profiled and illegally detained without warrants, families separated and sent to other states and countries. Many of those are our own students. Despite these unprecedented times, I've seen the resiliency and the perseverance of families and of communities and of councils like yours throughout the southeast cities. Many of you using your own bodies as barriers to protect your neighbors. Others have joined rapid response networks or found ways to deliver groceries to those most in need. In these moments, that gives me hope, because that shows that better times are ahead. I want to thank you all here, Mayor Davila, who stood in solidarity with us yesterday at the district, along with other city representatives, during our press conference. You being there, your presence was very important, not only to LAUSD, but to the community of Southgate and to all of us. I'm excited and grateful that the City of Southgate will also be working with the district to support our students' return to school. As a school board member representing the students in Southgate, I want to share with you all here, what the community, what we have in LAUSD and what we are doing to ensure a safe opening and return to schools. First, let me share with you this bilingual family preparedness package. It's right here, and you will see it in the back. We've left, and I think you have it. It's a four-page document that outlines supports for our families. It encourages families to make a childcare plan with names of very important people who can pick up their child from school, their primary doctor's name, a pediatrician's name, if they have legal representation to write that information, other emergency contacts, and it also has the LAUSD family hotline, where parents can call, family members can call, and ask questions about where to receive more support. So this is very important. We are distributing this throughout LAUSD. We are placing them at parks and recs, libraries, in city halls throughout the city, and we encourage you to please place it everywhere in Southgate. I'm also leaving my business card there so that you can also communicate with me if there is something in here that does not connect with any of the needs that our families have. Perhaps there are things that we have missed, and we want to hear from that. So by tomorrow, all staff, by the end of tomorrow, our goal is that all staff will have been trained in protocols as to how to keep our families safe. That means bus drivers, teachers, instructional aides, cafeteria workers, buildings and grounds, everybody, wall to wall at every school site should have some training. If they don't have it tomorrow, they will have it the next day, and at the latest, it will be the following week. Again, if this is not happening, and you hear from family members that people are still confused about what to do to keep our students safe, please let us know. The other thing is principals are going to be holding meetings with families at, they're called Coffee with the Principal, and they will there share all the things in this document, as well as answer questions that families may have. So we're asking families to please stay, pay close attention to when these meetings will happen. They will be hybrid, so they will be in person as well as online for those folks who don't, who cannot make it. We are also in partnership with the YMCA, who is delivering food to homes and to families that need it. If you are a family member who needs this support, please let your principal know. We are also offering transportation to families who may need it. Again, let the principal know, and they will guide you. And for those folks who, even with all of these supports, still don't feel safe to send their kids to school, there is a virtual academy option. So we are doing everything possible to make sure that our students continue to get their education and continue to be safe in our schools. For our students, I want them to know that you are safest at our schools, and your teachers and counselors and support staff are there to support you. And the City of Southgate is also there to support you, to make sure that you have a safe and welcoming environment on your way to school. You belong here, and no one can tell you otherwise. To our parents, I'll say it in Spanish. Padres sepan que sus hijos son la prioridad de nuestras escuelas. El bienestar de sus hijos es primordial para todos, y no los vamos a abandonar. Todos en LAUSD, los de la junta directiva, los maestros, trabajadores de cafetería, asistentes, trabajadores de limpieza y mantenimiento, administración, están dispuestos y listos para mantener a sus hijos seguros. Por favor, le recomiendo que se comunique con su director sobre cualquier necesidad o inquietud que tenga, y asegúrese de su hijo e hija que asista a la escuela. Not that your child's teachers and school staffs are the priority in the well-being of your child. They are there for them, and they will not abandon them. All of us in LAUSD, board members, teachers, cafeteria workers, aides, principals, custodial staff, administrators, are committed to keeping our students and families safe. So I urge all parents and family members to communicate with the principal of any needs and concerns that you may have, so that your child can have a safe return this Thursday. And to our community, once again, I want to thank you for stepping up to support your neighbors, whether you were a part of a rapid response network, contributing to a community organization's effort to empower our neighborhoods and small businesses, or participating in mutual aid work like delivering groceries, raising funds to help pay for much-needed legal services. Each of you is very important in keeping our communities safe. We are the strongest when we come together, and you are a reminder that it is communities that keep us safe. And so this is a moment that instead of working in silos, we work together. And to the City of Southgate, thank you again for prioritizing the safety of our students and families, because when we all support our youth, our communities thrive. And I also would like to invite you all to our open house, our District Five office open house, which will be taking place on August 27 at Gage Middle School from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And there, we will continue to have resources for families, as well as talk about the budget tools that the district is offering, so parents can be more engaged and involved and in the know about everything that is happening in LAUSD. Once again, thank you so much. I will leave some business cards in the back, and of course, I will leave all of this literature, and I encourage you to reach out to me or my office if you have any questions, any feedback, whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here today and sharing this information with us, and how important it is to make sure that when our children go back to school, they are safe, especially going to school and going back home. I think that we, as a community, we need to make sure that we look up to those children, because, you know, they are the priority of our community. So I just want to thank you for that. And yesterday, as we, as we were all, I think every city there is, as long as we continue being united, and I think that we can see things happening. But thank you again, and I'm going to open to my colleagues if they have any questions before you leave. And again, thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes. Welcome to our beautiful city of Southgate. I know you were campaigning a couple of years ago, but thank you for having our beautiful city close to your heart, making the time to come and enlighten us with all of these resources. And I greatly appreciate that any of our mothers, fathers, grandparents are able to have that open door policy with their principals to be able to address whatever needs that family has. Because again, a one-size-fits-all is not always equitable, because everyone's needs are different. So thank you so much for what you are doing, representing our area on the board, but more importantly, what you're doing not only for this area, but for all of the students that LAUSD has been given the care for, their education, and it's thousands of students. So thank you. As a teacher, an educator, it fills my heart to know that our students in Southgate are going to walk into a welcoming environment where they will feel safe, and if not, that virtual academy is available to them. So hopefully with that, there is also going to be support with hotspots, because what the pandemic showed us is unfortunately that we don't have the broadband to be able to support all of that virtual learning. So hopefully, the district will be able to supply that to our families.
Yes, I will bring that back, and I will make sure that once we offer that to the student, to the family, that they are equipped to be able to access their education. I forgot to mention transportation. If there are families who do not feel safe walking their child to school, there is transportation available. So again, we encourage them to talk to their principal, let them know their needs, and the principal will be able to accommodate and support with the paperwork necessary to make that happen.
Thank you, and I look forward to collaborating with you, because I know we've got some issues pressing, but we won't discuss here. But thank you so much for making the time.
Sure, thank you.
Any other council member?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. School Board Member Carla Griegego, thank you for your short tenure being here. I know you've been cutting here recently, and you're here now in Southgate. We appreciate you. I know you're from the Northeast, but you're down here. You have a presence down here. Appreciate the staff you've hired. You seem to have good people around you. So hopefully, before the end of the semester, you can come back and give us a report card, how we're doing, how we can improve learning here in our community, okay?
Of course. Thank you so much, definitely. And I'm going to be visiting the schools in Southgate as well. So I've made it to several schools last semesters, but I'll continue.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, thank you. I reached out to you a few times, and you're always very responsive. So I just want to make sure that people know that you're not just holding the title and holding the seat, but you're there to listen and offer some support. And yeah, you're going to have to figure out how to get from the north side on this way. This district is really weird. It's too bad you just can't go down the riverbed. It's kind of a shortcut.
A bike.
Well, I got to tell you, that's a pretty long ride anyway, but thank you for being very responsive.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, the whole district is my heart. I'm a teacher, a 20-year teacher, and as you know, we teach. We love all of our kids, and we teach everywhere. And so all the children, not only in Southgate, but throughout the southeast cities, and I acknowledge that it's been a long time coming to get representation and to be heard. And so my goal is to make sure that that happens. And that's what my staff is committed to doing, and I am committed to doing.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for being here today, Carla. I think it's really reassuring to our families and to the members of our community that we have a school district that's taking this seriously, that they created a game plan to handle these situations. So I think that's, you know, speaks volumes of that effort. And I'm thankful that, you know, you were able to come down here and provide that information. This is a great packet to be able to hand out. It's a lot of good information, a lot of stuff that, you know, families should have already prepared, you know, just the little checklist that sometimes we just overlook certain things. So this would be a great resource for our family. If we can maybe, I don't know if there's a digital version of this that we can also link to. Some of our social media would be great for us to be able to do that as well, so that way we just provide this as many ways as we can, but thank you.
Great idea. Yes, we can certainly provide you that link, and you could put it on your website as well. So yeah, thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here with us. Thank you.
You've all been very welcoming as well, so thank you, and keep calling me. My card is there. Please reach out. I'm also going to be holding town hall meetings on a monthly basis, hopefully, virtually. Today, I had 100 parents from the southeast cities join me in a call where we shared all of this information. So I will follow me on Instagram, and we're going to post it there. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so with that, we're going to go on to non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. And if you're going to speak, if you can, please make a line so we can know how many of you will be speaking. You can come to the podium. Okay.
Sí, bueno. Hola, muy buenas tardes.
Okay, nada más este tantito. Para que le esté traduciendo, la traductora dele pausas para que le traduzca este todo lo que dice.
Hello, good evening.
Sí, okay. Ah, mi nombre es Abel Silva.
My name is Abel Silva.
Vengo a informarles que por poco más de diez años he sido parte de un grupo de personas que nos reunimos en el parque de Southgate.
I am here to inform you tonight that for the last 10 years, I have been part of a group of people that get together at Southgate Park.
Lo hacemos con intención de copivir y desestresarnos un poco.
We do this so that we socialize and de-stress.
Y por las últimas tres semanas hemos estado siendo como acosados por parte de la policía del parque.
For the last three weeks, I wanted you to know that we've been harassed by the Southgate Park Police.
Ah, que no nos permite llevar a cabo nuestra actividad.
They don't allow us to go on with our activities.
Y en algunas ocasiones ellos se han tornado violentos y ante la modalidad de las, este, oficiales, ellos tratan de hablar, por ejemplo, con las personas...
On a couple of occasions, they have become a little aggressive, and they try to talk to people...
Que nos miramos ya un poco mayores.
Like me, that look a little older.
Solo para ponernos por ejemplo.
Only like setting us as an example.
Y esta actividad la llevamos a cabo los días martes y jueves.
We carry on these activities on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Y como les repito, yo soy parte de este grupo por al menos diez años.
I've been part of the group for at least 10 years.
Pero hay algunos, otras personas que han formado parte de este grupo por al menos 30 años.
But there's others in the group that have been part of this group for over 30 years.
Y pues ahorita venimos aquí ante ustedes para manifestar nuestro, para informarles, informarles, y que ustedes sepan nosotros estamos, pues, con intención de seguir.
We are here informing you of what's going on, but with the intention so that we are allowed to continue.
Y dejarles saber que nosotros no causamos ningún mal al parque, solamente estamos haciendo ejercicio de nuestra libertad de derechos que pensamos que tenemos.
For you to know that we're not causing any harm or any grievance to the park, but we're just there getting together and exercising our freedom of rights.
Y queremos utilizar el parque para, pues, nuestra actividad, ejercitarnos un poco. Somos personas mayores.
We're there mainly as older people that are there to exercise somewhat and socialize and exercise and walk around.
Nos han recomendado asistir a un lugar que renta canchas de fútbol que se encuentra muy cercas, pero realmente no, no podemos costearlo.
They've recommended that we maybe should go on to some other fields, like soccer fields. The soccer, señor? The soccer fields that maybe could be rented, but... but we can't really afford that.
Y nosotros pues utilizamos el parque para llevar a cabo nuestra actividad.
And we use the park for our reasons, for our activities.
Y por su atención, muchísimas gracias. Alguno de mis compañeros también va a manifestar su opinión.
Thank you for your attention.
Muchísimas gracias.
And my partners here are going to speak for the same.
Sí, buenas tardes, noches. Mi nombre es Francisco Loza y como decía el compañero.
Good evening, my name is Francisco Loza and as my colleague said.
Sí, como decía el compañero, pues hemos tenido un poco de problemas. Este, creo que nosotros no hacemos ningún problema ahí.
We've been having some issues, but we, I believe, we're not a problem.
Y pues la problema es que ellos no nos dejan ya hacer las actividades.
The problem is that we're not being allowed to carry on our activities.
Y por eso pues pedimos saber si pudieran hacer algo para poder nosotros continuar porque.
And we're here to ask you if you can do something about this and help us out.
Este, lo que hacemos nosotros tratamos también de llevar jóvenes y todo para mantenerlos.
And we also try to recruit younger people that can also be there with us doing the same kind of activities.
Drogas y vicios.
And keeping them out of vice and drugs.
Este, como decía el compañero, yo tengo como desde el 90, 1990.
I myself have been involved in this since like 1990.
Y pues no habíamos tenido problemas hasta hoy.
And we had never had any problems until now.
Este, como decía, si pudieran hacer algo, se los agradeceríamos mucho.
As I said before, if you could intercede and do something to help us out, I would really appreciate that.
Se los agradecemos, muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gracias.
Okay, um, thank you for hearing our concerns. I'm also part of this beautiful community. Thank you.
Can we have your name, please?
Okay, my name is Roberto Sanchez. I'm a Southgate resident here. And my mother-in-law has been living here over 20 years. And I'm part of this beautiful community that we've been mentioning. And all we do is we go there, socialize, we have a good time and play soccer. But for the past two weeks, a park ranger came and she actually brought another park ranger and she was holding her hand, her hand and her gun like that. And I go, what's, why so aggressive? Why are you guys coming so aggressively? We're just here having a beautiful time playing soccer. And she goes, wow, you guys need a permit to play soccer here? And we told her, well, if that's the case, there's about five other people playing soccer there. Are you also gonna? I didn't want them to get to kick them out, but I just wanted to make them aware of that. Wait a minute, this park is, you know, to play soccer. So she let, I told her, do the right thing. That was Deputy Flores. I go, Deputy Flores, do the right thing. You know this is wrong. So she left us alone. She goes, she didn't come back for a whole week. But then the following week, the city employee did come. And I don't know her name, but I would get it if you'd like to. And I told her, you know this is wrong, you know. But she goes, I'm just doing my job. I go, I know, but you know, even if you're doing your job, what is right is right. We're here having a good time, playing soccer and enjoying ourselves. And I told her and she goes, well, you need a permit. And so we went to the front, to the City of Department of Creation, and that's what they told us to come here to address it to you, to you lovely people, so we could get a resolution. And what we want is, what I want is to follow, somebody to follow up with me. I would like to leave my phone number because we're creating, Southgate should have a space where people of the community could come freely enjoy themselves to either play soccer, which we should have it, which we believe we had that right. Play volleyball, basketball, whatever, a free space that us taxpayers, we pay for, for the enjoyment and for the promotion of. And we have young people. We have people that, you know, it keeps them off the streets. We have young people that, you know, at least they, it gives them an avenue, a little outlet, you know. So it's a beautiful community. So it's a community, so we want to create, we want to continue this space of where people could gather as a community freely, a free space. Because they did tell us what the park ranger said. Well, SOFI is there. You could go to SOFI and pay, but not everybody has the resources. And it gets a little, you know, not everybody has the resources to pay. So we wanted to address that. So if you may please follow up with me.
If you can give Steve Costley your number, he's going to give you his card and he's the one that you're going to be following up with.
Okay, and then we also want to know what rules we're breaking and all that.
And I'm sure that he will let you know.
So, and thank you guys for hearing us out. We greatly appreciate it.
Yes, and Steve, if you can please send a meeting with them so you can explain to them the procedures that they need to go through in order for them to do their activity, okay?
And also like if there's a designated area where we could go.
Your time is up, so we need to move on.
Thank you, Maria Davila. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
God bless you guys.
Next.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Wilson Castillo. Just following up to what my partners were saying. We just want to have a good time at the park. We go there every Tuesday and Thursday. I get, I work 12 hours every day. The only days that I come out early is Tuesdays and Thursdays, just so I could go play soccer. I need copying mechanisms, you know? I could be out there doing drugs. I could be out there smoking weed, drinking alcohol. But no, I just decide to just go and relieve my stress at the park. So it doesn't make sense for me that someone comes and tells me, no, you can't do that, you need a permit for that, when we've been doing that for the last 10 years, at least me. Just that's it. I just want a little bit more attention. World Cup is coming up, the United States, Mexico and Canada 2026. So why not just be free and play soccer? You know, it wouldn't look good in the news if something comes out and be like, oh, you know, they're stopping these people from playing soccer, doing this activity. And just as I said, just bringing a little bit more attention to that case. Because as like I said, we just, I don't feel like we're doing anything wrong just playing soccer. And just thank you for your attention.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council, mayor and staff. So just real quick to the people who just spoke Thursday at 7:00. In this building, we'll have a Parks and Rec Commission meeting. So I'd like to invite you to attend to that and voice your concerns there as well. My name is Edgar Pelayo, resident of Southgate. And just real quick, I wanted to thank the chief for answering our questions last time around regarding the horse thing. I think that, you know, provides a lot of insight on that. And I'd like to thank the chief, of course, and then the officers who are providing their time and resources for that. I just think that maybe next time, ahead of, letting that information out ahead of time would probably eliminate a lot of questions and concerns from the community. So thank you for that. I also like to comment on the last meeting where I think there were a few concerns brought up about, you know, people just coming and criticizing and not providing any type of solution to any of the issues going on in the city. And, you know, it isn't that we're criticizing necessarily. We're just providing some feedback and letting you guys know what we see. Because you, of course, can't be out there and you can't see everything. Just taking place or taking part in our civic duty. You know, this requires a dialogue both from you guys, city staff and the residents to be able to bring things up and make it known so that they can be addressed fairly quickly. So I think that, you know, it's, don't take it as a criticism, rather take it as a dialogue, right? Hey, we're letting you know what's going on. And if you already know, then hopefully we can see something done about it. But if you don't, then maybe you can start a conversation around that and get something going. So, you know, again, it's not to criticize, it's not to criticize you. We're all part of the same team. I'd like to see the city of Southgate stay afloat. And if I can contribute to anything, I'd be more than happy to do it. So we're all on the same team again and then with, you know, I'd like to contribute in that manner. But, you know, at the same time, we can't ignore the things that we see, you know. And some of those things have to do around safety, sidewalks, streets, infrastructure, trees. And that's what we see. The reality of it is that I'd invite any of you guys to come down the street that I live on, on Malison, and take a ride on that street, just so you see what it feels like. Nearby streets, same thing, and it hasn't been one or two years. It's been more like 10 to 15 years that it's been that way. And so, you know, that's the reality that we're living. And it has nothing to do with criticism. Rather, it has something to do with getting something done about it. I know that some comments were made about us not knowing what's going on behind the scenes. So I'd like to ask for you guys to, you know, let us know. That's part of that dialogue, right? Let us know what's going on so that we don't come and ask these questions that seem as if we're criticizing you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Roberto Sanchez. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak in this chamber. I'm not sure when it was, I believe it was like a year ago, that the city put in some lines for pickleball in the Southgate tennis courts. And I just want to say that investment has been amazing. I mean, we've seen so many senior citizens coming out, people that are alone or, you know, have diabetes, heart disease. And I mean, you see them all playing together, building a huge community, so much fun. The only problem is that there's only two portable nets and a lot of the times it's just not enough. So we've talked to a lot of people that are there playing tennis as well. And a lot of people, I mean, seem to agree that if we just sacrifice just one tennis court, you could get four pickleball nets out of that one court. And I mean, you won't be having people playing pickleball in other tennis courts and then people wanting to play tennis waiting for those tennis courts. So just pretty much that, short and sweet, I guess. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close this audience. Do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three emails. First one is from Brenda Rojas, PhD, a resident of Southgate. She submitted the following comment. And GWS slash UWS, a composting facility located in the city of Southgate has historically, has a history of documented odor and dust complaints with the city's South Coast Air Quality Management District, AQMD, dating back to at least 2015. On August 7, 2025, Dr. Rojas confirmed with the AQMD supervisor that recent odor complaints have not been routed to the local enforcement agency as required under California Health and Safety Code 41705. Based on our conversations with both community members and LEA, it appears that these complaints have not been forwarded since at least 2022. Dr. Rojas requested that this be entered into the, into public records tonight. I received a non-agenda item comment from Mr. Roberto Sanchez. He's a Southgate resident of 15 years and requested an update on the virtual attendance and participation options for the city council meetings with available and when they will be available, noting that his evening work schedule has prevented him from attending in person. He also expressed concern over the city's budget deficit, pointing out inconsistent figures and urging city officials to take responsibility and find solutions to the financial challenges facing our city. I received another one from a concerned resident of Southgate who reports ongoing dust and odor issues from the UWS composting facility affecting the Circle Park area for over 10 years now, with complaints seemingly not reaching the proper channels. This resident recommends the city distribute a survey to nearby residents and businesses to address the extent of the problem and demonstrate its commitment to the community's wellbeing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. With that, we're going to go on to staff reports. And we're going to start with Dwyane Fudon. If there were any questions.
Madam Mayor, there were no questions tonight related to Public Works and I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. It's been a busy couple of weeks since our last council meeting and we've done a ton of fun things at the park. As many of you know, we had our last concert in the park since our last meeting and we had some great attendance to that. We were over 500 there for that one, the whole series. Top about 750, lowest only 400 people. So we've had great attendance at our concerts in the park. We ran a bunch of different activities. Our family camp night, we had our family camp night. We had 40 families sign up. Over 200 residents were scheduled to camp with us. They had a blast. I, hopefully some of you have seen some of the Instagrams on it. They had a glow party at 10 o'clock at night that 70 kids out on the dance floor with their parents having a glow party. They had a great time doing all that, playing in the water during the day, eating food, playing games. A lot of the families have never camped before. And so to them, this is a chance to bring out their kids, go somewhere where it's familiar. And if life happens, they can get home in 10 minutes, you know? But they love it. In fact, they're trying to get us to do more and more of those. So they're having a great thing. The other real big one was we had our very first movie in the park at Hollydale Community. We built the new park and we put that big screen area in the back of it. And we said, you know, that's for summer. When we start summer, we're going to have our first movie in the park. And you never know what the attendance will be. Well, from Moana to, our first attendance was over 140. I heard last Friday, we almost had 200. This is Hollydale Community. It's not that big a park, but they love it. In fact, the neighbors are sitting out in their chairs at their driveways in the houses watching the movie from their residence. So it's going over great. It's part of the fun. There are, there's some places you can see it. I, you can hear it. I could hear it three blocks down. Maybe we might need to turn down the volume, but no one complained. But I literally walked in my car and I could hear, hear the end of the movie. And I'm, I was literally halfway to, you know, Paramount. Like, okay. But total enjoyment. They love the movies in the park over there. And we're going to start planning them, some other activities. And we're getting great attendance over there on a nightly basis.
Yeah, how many more movies to go?
Every Friday in August. So I think it's Sonic 3 this week. I'm not the expert on it.
Sonic 3, there you go.
So we got all that going. They're going to come on out, but they're hanging, you know that hill? They're hanging out on the hill. They're loving the whole thing. I think halfway through every movie, the kids just start rolling down the hill, but that's nothing. But they're enjoying it greatly.
It is a beautiful park. What can you say? Okay, thank you, Steve. Gabe?
Madam Mayor, member of city council, Gabriel Paredes. Just wanted to update you on one of the comments that was provided from the public about odor or dust potentially coming from EWS or GWS. So staff is following up with that, code enforcement, and I'm taking a direct role with that. So we are trying to log all those complaints, verify if those complaints do come from there or if it's another source. So we do need to pinpoint that. And, you know, also talking to the regulatory agencies. So we are in communication with South Coast AQMD. So there is some work that we're doing on it and hopefully we can update you very soon, you know, what the outcome is and if it is something that is coming from that site. We've been in touch with the operators and they are responsible for odor and dust mitigation from past lease agreements. So we just want to make sure those safeguards are in place and we'll update you in the future again.
Thank you. Okay, Luis?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, I have nothing to report today.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, city council. Nothing to report.
Chief?
Mayor and council, just wanted to reiterate that next week when school starts, we have plenty of personnel on duty that will be able to cover the schools when they're free. We have plenty of personnel, but there's a lot of schools. So during calls, when we get time, we're going to make sure that we go there and check out the traffic situation and do our very best to assist school police if that's, if it's necessary. Also, we're a little bit more than six weeks away from the Southgate Car Show. It's a car show that the staff from Public Works, Parks and the Police Department put together a couple of years ago. And the funds benefit the toy drives that we normally do. It's kind of like the kickoff. So we got the pre-registration going. like the kickoff. So we got the pre-registration going. I hope to see everyone out there. We'll probably have the mayor's selection again this year. But it's a great event. We're expecting a lot of cars, so that's a fun event. Also, on September 6, it's a Saturday, the Pink Patch Project and LA County Sheriff's Department have put together a 5K run at Frank Benelli Park in San Dimas. There's probably close to three hundred runners registered already. It's a 5K for, to support the Pink Patch Project. That event, we're gonna bring all the LA County agencies together to showcase our Pink Patch merchandise, and we're gonna run in support of, you know, the survivors and the fighters. We've had some medals made, and then each survivor and fighter will get a special, in addition to the medal that they get, they'll get a special medal that they'll be able to get when they finish the race. So we're promoting it now, and with the help of the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Flynn and I will be up there saying a few words and hoping to have a big turnout. And then finally, I went to the funeral today. It was the last funeral for Detective Lemus from the Sheriff's Department. So just a reminder that, you know, police work is a very dangerous job, and the women and men that protect this community and all across LA County, there's some times that you just don't know if you're gonna come home, right? And Detective Lemus left behind a wife and three children. So, you know, I asked the public, always support the police officers. It's easy to criticize, you know, police officers, you know, for one incident that happens in the Midwest or on the other side of the country. But by and large, everyone does a wonderful job at trying to do their very best to protect this community, and it comes with dangers. So keep those three families in your prayers, and just remember that we're there to protect the community. That's all.
Thank you. City Manager?
Thank you. Just a small update. As part of our continued efforts to look for streamlining, modernization, and best practices throughout our city operations, we've been working behind the scenes for a number of months to work with a company called HDL to take over our business license processes. And so we've just begun a soft go-live of that service this week. And Louis is overseeing that, working with staff. So in the future, people can, there'll be an online portal that's up, and we'll be doing more social media to advertise that. And people, when they need to get a business license, which could be South Gate operators that have businesses here, or contractors, if they want to come and do work here, they may go over to our community development counter, say, here's my plans. I'm gonna come into South Gate and build an ADU, and they get told by staff, well, if you're gonna operate here, you need a business license. So they may even live in who knows where, you know, Riverside or something. So they, in the past, would come during work hours to City Hall often, and in person, get the business license. The portal will help automate this in a more streamlined way, so they can access it Saturday, Sunday, whenever they want, do it online. Renewals can be done online. Any of our local businesses can use the online portal. But we still will have help here. We'll have a tablet here. People can learn it. We can have staff help them. So we'll work with people. But we're also hopeful and expecting that this HDL company, they're in the business of sales tax, business license, they're in the finance world, and they do this service for other cities, and they tend to have a higher ability to enforce lapses in business license or underpayments. So we believe that there'll be additional revenue that the city will be able to get from this process, which, as we know, we're looking under every rock in the couch cushions for revenue opportunities to be more efficient. So I just wanted to highlight this. It's coming now. There'll be a few bumps as we get all the systems working, but we appreciate everyone's patience while we try to modernize the city.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Today, the city of South Gate joined about twenty other cities in filing an amicus brief before the United States Supreme Court. The purpose of the brief was to state the city's position with respect to requesting Supreme Court to uphold the stay order that was issued by a federal district judge, district court judge, in connection with the immigration activities, enforcement activities that were going on. So the district court issued a stay order. It was appealed to the Ninth Circuit, which upheld the district court's order. The government has now filed a request to the Supreme Court, and because the city's not yet an official party of that action, it filed a friends of the court brief, known as an amicus brief, joining the city of LA, the city of Long Beach, Carpinteria, a number of cities in the nearby area, requesting Supreme Court to keep that stay order in place. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That was part of the press conference that it was held on Friday.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you. City Treasurer?
Madam Mayor, nothing new to report.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to state that we encourage our civic engagement and welcome residents to participate in our meetings. And while we currently do not have a virtual option, I do invite you all to attend in person at our council chambers and share your concerns directly. And if attending in person is not possible, you may email me your comments at yglaze@southgate.org. I will then forward your comments to each individual council member and provide a summarized version during the meetings to ensure that your voice is heard. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, welcome to everyone that's here in council chambers on YouTube. But more importantly, welcome to another school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, to all of our little ones that are starting school tomorrow, like I am in Linwood. I don't know about LA USC, I think they start on Thursday?
Thursday.
So it's this week, Chief, not next week. No, this week.
This week.
This week. No, you said next week. That's why I'm like, I gotta make sure.
No, Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday. Just wanna make sure, because if you go next week, it might be.
They'll be there.
But we need them this week. Just saying, just saying.
They'll be there, they'll be there.
I did have an opportunity to attend the Southeast Water Coalition. South Gate also joined in a lawsuit several years ago with 3M, and it's, we got a report from the council back in New Orleans, indicating that I believe we received some monies from 3M. Do you know exactly how much? Because Pico got a million. I wanna see how much we got.
I don't have the exact amount, but perhaps before the city council meeting is up, I can track that down for you.
Okay, perfect. They are also opening up membership to other cities that are water providers to their residents. So I know that there were other cities in our area that are not part of the board currently, but the membership will be open to them. I will be attending vector control this Thursday. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, but I would like to ask our mayor if you can give us an update as to what's happening with Hub Cities and their status, because I know we funded them through ARPA funding, and apparently, they didn't get it. So if we could just get a report as to where we're at. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, again, thanks to those that are here. And yeah, when the emails go to our city clerk, we get the entire email, and we read every single word, and then she just gives a short presentation on it. So we do get to hear the entire thing. The pickleball, I'm glad that that was brought up. I'm surprised you didn't mention about the Circle Park. I know it's on the agenda, but in terms of the pickleball court, I don't know if you wanna touch on that, since you're there. It's your park, Steve?
Yes, when we do open Circle Park back up, it will have a dedicated pickleball court in it. And actually, the, we have plans of possibly converting two of the courts into pickleball, making eight full courts, but we're working through that process at this point.
And the soccer people left already, but that's gonna have a small soccer facility too, or?
Not soccer, footsall.
Okay. What the heck is that?
It's soccer on concrete. It's a artificial turf field with smaller walls, so that, picture your goal soccer center, but with smaller walls, only four feet high in some places, where the objective of the game is to, it's more of a slow-play passing game than it is a pull-out, kick it as hard as you can game. So footsall is more taught for control of the game of soccer, and how to pass, receive, and do those type of things in there.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's a new sport for me. I never heard of it before. But I guess there's a lot of things that I have never heard before. But anyhow, well, thanks. But again, at least you have some information on the pickleball thing. Let's see. I'm glad that we were talking a little bit about some of the activities that are going on. These are very difficult times for everybody, right? All these raids and all the changes that are going on, pretty scary. I think people need to really stay in touch with all the news activities. But what we do here is we try our very best. I can tell you that over the last few months, we've been reached out to for resources. There's very little that we can do in terms of the raids. We can't really stop them. We're doing everything we can legally that we can do. And I can tell you that in talking to people who've reached out for food items, that my colleagues have all been involved in it, because I'll go to a place, and they say, oh, yeah, so-and-so brought some before. Thank you again. And I was reached out to by another friend who wanted some backpacks for people who are afraid to go to some of those backpack giveaways, and I was able to pick up some from the people from Prime Store. And I'm gonna drop them off next week. They asked for fifty. I asked for sixty, and they're gonna come through with sixty. So again, we're gonna try to get those resources out. But, you know, I always have a hesitation on trying to tell people, hey, don't worry, it's all safe, because we entered this lawsuit, or because, you know, we got these resources for you. Because at the end of the day, look what they're doing. They're getting Penske trucks and coming out of them, and, you know, what can we do? We can't go out there and say, no, leave them alone, and flash a badge, and they, oh, I'm sorry, they don't know you didn't want us here. They're gonna do what they're gonna do. And I never want to give anybody false hope, where they think it's safe to go out there. You still have to be vigilant. A friend of mine used to be a schoolteacher here. He's out in Bell High School now, and he posted the other day that he was driving through a place here in the United States, and they had a, where they were stopping people, and there was a big sign that says, please have your proof of immigration status. And his thought was, wow, I never thought in our country that I would have to show proof of my status. And, but that's the world we live in. So again, we just have to be vigilant. We'll continue to inform people. We're just gonna continue to tell you, be careful when you're out there. But we're gonna do what we can to get to whatever resources we can. But we don't ever want to give you the impression that because we said so, they won't affect you. Just be vigilant. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Rios?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just wanna say, some good ideas regarding the pickleball. I like that idea of, that sounds, seems like a lot of people are having fun with it. So, you know, and if we could make that happen, or whatever, where people are more involved, that's great. The other thing is, I know that we talked about the park. I'm just kinda, I don't know if we addressed, I'm glad that you brought it up. That group that left, is there, do you have any comments on that, Steve, in regards to, are they using the wrong place of the park, or is it, is it, they don't have a facility?
Mayor and Council, as we have discussed in past issues with different sports, the problems that we have here are when organized leagues show up at a park without a permit or stuff, where it becomes a large liability for us, and some state laws that are not being adhered to. And we also run into a number of problems through the past years with leagues that have started, kids who are there, and then coaches disappear, and no one has any money, and everyone looks at us and says, well, why didn't you take care of that? I'm not saying that that's exactly what's happening here, but as we go through this process, people who come to conduct a business on the park without any permits or any processes going through, leave a large liability for the Parks and Recreation Department and the city overall. While we have certain areas that we allow soccer play in, most of our soccer play, because of the busyness of South Gate Park, is, takes place at Hollydale Regional. We open space, we allow permits. We have talked to this group on several occasions, and I have met with their lead, whoever the leadership is, and they said, hey, we're coming to get permits, we're going to do that. And then we haven't received anything back in those areas. So it's not that we haven't been out and talked to them. I've met with them, James has met with them, the staff has all met with them at different timeframes. But it's really a question of, if it's four guys and, you know, running around trees, playing soccer together, we most part don't, unless they're interrupting with other park activities. But this is an organized league play. If I have the proper group, they're out there doing organized league stuff, and the second, some kid hits the ground wrong and stamps his ankle, the liability goes right back to us. And so we kind of look at that. And there's other state laws that we're not saying that they're against or for, we're not accusing anyone of anything. But legally, I gotta have fingerprints for every coach that's out there. I don't know what's happening. We hear the rumors in life, not only through soccer, but baseball and football. We've done this with every group imaginable. And, you know, I get the phone calls that, hey, oh, no, those are out there, but don't worry, the coach is dating the girl on the team. And it's like, okay, now we're, now we're causing trouble in life. But we don't have control over that, because we don't have permits, we don't have fingerprints, we don't have anything. And not everyone wants to do that, because they're playing somewhere else. Their travel ball is somewhere else. So that's part of our problem.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. That's a good response in terms of, yeah, so hopefully, we clarify some more of that. Thank you. Just, I guess, you know, as the last couple of months, I've noticed a lot of e-bikes and these other vehicles, this is not for you, for any Steve in particular, just general, maybe for the police, that have to do with these bikes that are out there. And I see them coming out of driveways and right on the street, and I'm saying, gee, it's an accident waiting to happen. You know, and I just wondered if there's anything we could do to, you know, I know there, these are motorbikes that are on our streets, and they're just coming, and they just seem to be driving in all directions, and I just worry about that. I mean, any thoughts on that, Chief?
Yeah, so the, there's a lot of confusion about e-bikes, even in the legislature, because they're so new. But there are bikes that don't have pedals, but they're electric-run vehicles, and they're technically not legal for the streets. You see them on the, you see them on the roads quite often with a lot of young people. So once we get some clarification on what we can do with enforcement, I mean, there's clearly some things you can't ride on the sidewalk. This is just a matter of enforcement. I mean, we just have to have people to go out and do enforcement on that. And, you know, we try to educate as much as we can. And we used to do bike rodeos, right, and teach kids about bike safety, and so we're gonna have to start bringing them back. Technology has gone so far that, and I gotta be honest with you, those e-bikes are fun. I've been on a e-bike, and they're extremely fast. They're, they go up to sixty miles an hour. They're very, very dangerous. You can, you can really drive over your head with them. A lot of the kids, they do wheelies on them, they do a lot of things, and, you know, and more of it's education for the parents and the dangers. And a lot of them ride without helmets. So it's, we'll get some direction on that. We did put something out to our officers, most recently, about enforcement with e-bikes. It's just a matter of catching them and working on that.
Thank you, Chief. And finally, I just wanna invite some of our neighbors that are from the college there, Jason. And we're gonna have an open house tomorrow on Santa Fe between four to seven. The public's welcome. We're, you know, we're just gonna open house that office. We're a year away from opening the campus there. So, yeah, if you guys wanna come on down, come on down and meet our president, meet some of the folks from the district. We'll be there again tomorrow from four to seven. We're welcome to public.
Is that a promise that you're from now?
That's what they said.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Steve, just for a little bit of clarification, the movie for this week would be Minecraft. And then just a reminder to our residents that Thursday, we still do the movie at the park at South Gate Golf Course, and then the Friday is at the new park, Hollydale Community Park. I always wanna say regional park, but it's community park. So I went to both events, at Hollydale Community Park. So I went to both, uh, events, uh, at Hollydale Community Park, um, really well-attended, the families are enjoying the, the bench areas, um, you know, the first one, we kind of learned a little bit, the staff was learning a little bit, Sal did a really good job of addressing some of the issues that they were having, uh, at the first one, about, you know, there is hills now, so putting a chair at top of the hill kind of makes it difficult for everybody behind them to see, so putting up cones, saying no chairs on a lot on the hill area, just around the outside, made it a, a lot more enjoyable for a lot of the families that were there. Really well-attended, uh, great location, of course, and, uh, really impressed with the screen quality and the sound that's coming out of it, it's, you guys did a really good job with that. Um, I, I walked up to Sal, I said, you guys are doing a really good job. Um, so yeah, that's great. Um, Gabe, uh, just, uh, oh, and while I'm still with parks, you know, the pickleball, uh, I was, uh, one of those guys that was like, I have no idea what this is, I went to the Glow Dark, uh, pickleball court, uh, event that we had, I don't know if you saw that we had a glow, glow-in-the-dark pickleball event, and it was a lot of fun, uh, and the two courts on the outside, I think we kind of saw it, at least Steve, the way he explained it to me, was almost like a, um, like a trial, let's see if we can get people to be out there and enjoy them, uh, because we have the space for it, and I'm looking forward to being able to convert those courts, those two, uh, courts in the front, uh, to just a, a pickleball mini-complex for, for all the people who are, who have been out there, because every day when I walk out by there, um, when I walk, I rock right by the pickleball courts because I have to go to the, the small softball quad, I'm a, I, uh, I'm a coach out there, and, um, I see that they're busy all night long from the time I pass by to the time I come back, so really looking forward to that. Uh, Gabe, uh, just regarding the, um, the issue with UWS and GWS, by the way, GWS, uh, Green, uh, Waste Services, or I think that's what they're, that's what it is, it's like a sub-company of UWS. Um, have the residents that have been issuing the complaints just been notified of what our process is, or what, what we're doing? Um, I think tracking and documenting the, um, the instances where they're reporting to us is great, um, but I think we just need to make sure we're following up, uh, to them, Rob, so if there's any way for us to just maintain, not just the list, but also, you know, provides, maybe status updates on, you know, a monthly basis or some kind, I know the, the, we've just started tracking them in July, um, and just to have that conversation with the residents, because if it's the same two or three residents issuing the, the issues or the complaints, uh, it should be easy for us to communicate with them and kind of keep them in the loop.
Yeah, the, the main sort of leader of the neighborhood has had a number of conversations with staff, uh, but, um, I'm sure we can look to augment that in the future.
I, I just, based on the, the, the list that was provided, I, I saw there was one prominent one, or actually two prominent ones that were quite often, and it looks like they would probably be good people to contact, because I'm sure that they have the ears of the, the rest of the neighbors, um, around there. Uh, so I was able to, uh, to, and thank you, uh, Rob, for providing me that, uh, invite, and, uh, on August 1st, we met up with Jose Solache at our, uh, Maywood YMCA, um, uh, Councilmember Arios was also at the event. Um, so, Maywood YMCA, uh, is, was awarded, um, allocated some funds to be able to offer resources, uh, food, uh, services, the way they ha, they have been for quite some time, and they're just allowing or providing those resources to, uh, the local cities around us as a way for us to be able to pull from that resource. Um, so it was a great meeting, a lot of conversation, I think one of the things that we've learned is there's a, um, volunteer fatigue going on right now, uh, all of, you know, we see it, and part of the Selacuanyis, um, the president of the Selacuanyis, and our food distribution and our food packing, uh, volunteers, when the raids first started, were about 50 to 60 people showing up at every event, we're down to probably 12, uh, you know, just the lead 12, so we're starting to see that that's happening, uh, so we really gotta push on, uh, you know, finding, you know, different ways to be able to distribute this, uh, resource, uh, so that, you know, I, I know some cities have done, uh, some projects that way, I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do here, uh, with the ability to be able to pull from that resource from, uh, the Maywood YMCA, and, and I wanna thank, uh, um, Assemblymember Solache for setting that up, being together with a lot of the electeds in, in the Sella region, uh, it was good conversation, and, uh, just as a, as added to that, uh, just a reminder to our residents, the Southeast Leadership Network, uh, we're still taking phone calls, uh, it's, uh, along with the Selacuanyis, we're taking phone calls for, uh, food distribution for families who are in need of, uh, of food, uh, you know, I know it's very hard for our undocumented families to go out and, uh, and, and, and go shopping, and there's fear with that, so if, uh, there is a need, the phone number is 323-804-6639, uh, we will, it's completely, uh, uh, you know, anonymous, we don't, we don't take any names down, we just, uh, ask, uh, you know, what's needed at the, at the location, if there's children, uh, you know, we have some resources with, um, diapers and, and things of that sort, so, and, and, uh, the address where we can make the delivery. Um, and, uh, and since this has all started, I personally have probably made over 300 deliveries, uh, we've had, uh, just our group alone, well over 4,000 deliveries made, uh, to families, uh, on a weekly basis, and, uh, it's been, um, eye-opening, but really, uh, an experience that I think, uh, as a volunteer, most people need to, need to just experience. There's families out there that just are really reliant on this, and, um, you know, uh, at a time when I was really feeling down about just this whole situation, and how well, how this immigration thing is going, um, being able to make these deliveries kind of just helped, it, it really did, it provided a, a purpose, and it just provided the extra energy, so any volunteers out there who are interested, um, you know, we do a monthly, um, food packing event with the Selacuanyis, and we also do weekly distribution, so if you're interested, please reach out to the Southeast Leadership Network or the Selacuanyis, uh, through our social media.
Can you repeat the number, uh?
Yes.
In Spanish also, please.
Uh, yeah, the number is 323-804-6639. El numero para comida con el Southeast Leadership Network es 323-804-6639. Um, and, yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. On that note, I know that, um, some of the PSA councilors are also, uh, helping, I don't know if it was with the YMCA or with the, uh, organization, the Southeast, uh, that they were also helping out, but, and, uh, I think that they are gonna be continuing, uh, supporting, uh, that project, not project, but that help that their family needs. And with that, um, uh, this Thursday, our kids saw me go back to school, boy, am I looking forward for my kids to go back to school. I got three at home right now, I need to get rid of two, so, um, they're wonderful granddaughters, but, you know, I need a little break there, so, looking forward to, uh, taking them to school on Thursday, um, just, um, and also, um, on, on Monday at 4:00 PM, we have a new local superintendent, uh, her name is Dr. Ortiz, and, uh, she will be having a meeting, uh, at South Gate Middle School at 4:00 PM, so we have a new local, um, LA USC local superintendent, so, uh, if anyone is available to attend, please do so, and also, um, yesterday, I mean, the, the press conference, as many, uh, as many of you, uh, heard that there was a LA USC press conference due to, and, um, Ms. Diego mentioned, um, what, uh, went at that, um, press conference, but it's just to making sure that we keep our kids safe, and most importantly, you know, to get the community out, and just, you know, just look, uh, for the safety of our kids, I think that's the most important thing. Uh, also, um, this month, I will not be attending, uh, the, um, county certification meeting, so they go dark the whole month, so I won't be, we, there won't be no meetings, so I will be off on Wednesday, so if there's anything going on on Wednesday, I'm free, just for this month, okay? And for the question, uh, Councilwoman, um, there is, there is a, um, process of hiring, not hiring, but, uh, contracting for a new interim director, because our, uh, previous director, Jill Martinez, he, uh, retired, uh, his contract was not renewed, so, uh, right now, we are, uh, we do have, uh, an interim, um, and you probably know who he is, it's, uh, Andy Pasma, he's coming on board to look, uh, at, uh, you don't know Andy Pasma? He was the previous, uh, city manager here in South Gate.
He was here when Albert was there.
When Albert was here.
Before.
Oh, okay, so you don't know, I thought you knew him, but he's, uh, he's going to be helping us with, uh, with hub cities, and to look at the finances, and also, um, just, uh, you know, to see how we can do, unfortunately, we did not get the grant from the county, the RFP did not, we didn't get it, but we are still going to be appealing, uh, so, um, so we'll see what happens, but we still, we still do have, you know, funding for the next couple of months, and, uh, that is a process, and I know that the city managers are also, uh, meeting, uh, quarterly, or I don't know how often you guys are meeting, but, um, it's a process, it, it, that it's ongoing. And with that, I'll, just to get back to our agenda, I'm gonna stop there, I really don't have much to, don't get me wrong, I love my, I love my grandkids, but it's, it's been, no judging, I love them.
By the way, I should mention that, uh, my son's wife is expecting her third grandchild.
Congratulations.
My granddaughter, I guess 15, she says, I'm gonna feel more like an aunt to him, and they already know it's a boy, it's gonna be John Patrick, so anyhow.
Okay, and, uh, just before we go on to consent, um, we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of, uh, Rigoberto Duran, he is the father and uncle of, um, Danny and Abel. So, he passed away last Thursday, so we'll be adjourning on his memory. So with that, uh, City Clerk, can you please?
And Danny is an employee with the Parks and Recreation. Danny's an employee.
Danny is, yes, Danny, yes, Danny and also Abel. He's, uh, probably works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are consent calendar items.
Okay, we have consent calendar, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on any of the items? No? Okay, um, then I'm gonna close the audience section, do we have any emails?
We have emails, Madam Mayor. I have the first email for item number 3, from Mr. Mario Dominguez, who expressed frustration over the significant delay in completing Circle Park, noting the project is now six months past original six-month deadline. He urged the city council members to impose penalties on the contractor, accusing them of intentionally delaying the project to increase profits, and called for action to stop the alleged misconduct by them. Uh, item number 4, um, Mr. Dominguez questioned why the city is still paying Gannett Fleming Inc., a management firm, for the Tweedy Mall project, even though the construction is complete. He urged the city council to reject the payment and vote no on item number 4, expressing concern that this continued payment is an unnecessary expense. And then, um, item number 7, Mr. Dominguez proposed that the city's legislative platform includes strong support for securing state and federal funding for four major regional projects, Parque de los Rios, Imperial Wetlands, Southern Avenue Connector, and the Sella Bridge Park. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so with that, Council, you have any questions?
Uh, yes, I submitted some questions to Arturo for items 3 and 4, if you can just read those into the record, but also for item number 7, I wanted to see if we can make an addition of city, uh, man, of city manager, uh, to see if we can also add in there to start seeking funding for the Sella Cultural Center, as well as additional park projects that are on the riverbed.
I know, I got you, Steve, I got you.
What is it?
Just. Item number 7, just adding those two in there as well, to seek for funding.
Yeah, and, Madam Mayor, if I could, I, I also wanted to pull item number 3, um, for discussion, just only because I think, um, one of the questions that came in, um, I think a lot of residents would have regarding, uh, the, the cost, uh, associated with the project management contract, and I think there is an explanation, um, that the city manager can provide on that.
Yes, that's what, actually, what are the questions for?
Okay, so Arturo, you have those questions, I mean, those answers, sorry.
Yeah, I can provide just a very brief overview for background. A construction on this project started some time ago with two scheduled deadlines for completion, one of those was an accelerated schedule, that was March 31st, meaning if the contractor completed the project ahead of schedule, they would get an incentivized true payment, uh, they worked hard towards that, and they were not able to meet that schedule. Then the regular, uh, deadline for this project was May 15th, meaning after that, if they didn't complete the project by May 15th, then, you know, we go through the standard, uh, process. On this particular project, um, there's been some significant delays caused by the contractor, and my understanding is that the contractor underestimated the effort to build this project, this is their first park project, and while I look at the effort that they're putting in, they're putting in a lot of effort, they just simply underestimated it. Second, because of their lack of experience in the public sectors, they underestimated the effort that it takes to collaborate with utility companies and get them to do some of the work, so they've delayed construction quite a, quite a bit, uh, the city has added, uh, some additional improvements that also extended part of the schedule, and there were some more unforeseen conditions, but largely, the schedule delay has to do with, uh, with the contractor. In terms of remedying that, the contract has a provision that basically says if a contractor delays, uh, the project, there are penalties known as liquidated damages, a certain, certain number that is established in the contract of, as to how much we can charge per day of delay, so when the project is completed, we'll quantify all of that, and the main purpose of liquidated damages is to recover our costs. So largely, this 99,000, uh, component that we're looking to pay out tonight, we can look at what part of that was based to city added work, and what part of that is actually based on liquidated damages so that we can recover those costs now, and the city added work, that's also a positive thing, we've got grant funds, we've got leftover grant funds, and we wanna make use of them, so anytime there's an opportunity, we use the grant funds, and we add more work to continue to improve the, the project. So right now, we think that the contractor should be completing, uh, the construction as September 30th, as stated in the staff report, the contractor has yet provided another update on their efforts, and we're thinking it might even be mid-October, but at this point in time, we're really at the mercy of the contractor, and so that's why we're here, but we'll keep you posted with updates.
I'll ask a follow-up question, is there gonna be lights at Circle Parks?
Lights? Yes, there's lights at Circle Park, and there's pedestrian, the pedestrian lights?
There, there are security lighting at Circle Park, but there is not court play lighting, so if you're, it's a dawn to dusk park, and so after a certain point, it gets dark, you can't play, there will be security lighting around it, similar to what you just saw at the Urban Orchard, but it's not meant for night play, we will lock that park at dusk. I believe that's what you're looking at, right?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Uh, I, yeah, I had a question on, uh, item number 6, that's, uh, the batting cages? And the reason I ask that is because when Gold Soccer, um, built the facility, the last thing that they added were the batting cages, and I was like, under the impression that the entire thing was, uh, installed, operated, maintained, uh, by them, I didn't know that there was a cost for the city.
When we first put in the soccer, the soccer, uh, Gold Soccer.
Gold Soccer.
Stadium, I wanna call them SO5, because that's their actual new name, so, move between both, uh, the agreement was that, uh, when they built their own, uh, soccer complex there, that they agreed to build us a set of, uh, batting cages for the city. Soccer Center, we leased them the land underneath it, they operate as a public-private partnership there. The addition of the batting cages is a management agreement where they help us op- The addition of the batting cages is a management agreement where they help us operate it. We own the property and the batting cages. Thus, the, the part of the agreement is to, uh, share the maintenance costs on it. Because if we were to, we discovered this when we first started, if we were to operate it, we would be in the hole staffing-wise, the whole thing. It wouldn't, it doesn't pencil out. They operate for us, they get some profit. But when it comes back to the overall maintenance throughout the timeframes of it, we share that maintenance so that we're fair to both sides. Because it's our, it's our land, our batting cages. And they're just managing.
Yeah, SoFi is our, our land also, but we lease it. And that's, that's the impression I had with goals and the batting cages.
Right, and, and, and actually, in that portion of it, the funding you see in the report for that is we take the, and I, I'll look, but we take the funding out of our Park Enhancement Fund. And our Park Enhancement Fund is the money we get from the lease agreement from goals. So all that funding each year is brought into there, is put into our Park Enhancement Fund, so we can use it for specific things like we're doing right here.
Thank you, Steve.
City manager?
Um, I'll just add item number one, that we do have the applicant from Frams Hardware in the audience. Um, if there were any questions.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. On question, on one, I know they're here and I know they wanna put up a big flag, right? It's just like Schultz Steel. I guess they're real excited about that. And I have a process question brigade, and I think you already gave me the answer that you, you, you had discretion to go here or to the planning commission. And, you know, I just think it's important that we don't undermine that planning commission. I think it's an important process, a causal training ground for future council members. I think it's important that they also have opportunities to weigh in on these issues. That's the only thing, uh, I know, but, you know, I know it's your call, but I, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, so with that, um, I'm gonna get a motion for one, two, three, four, and five, six, seven, and eight. I'll second the motion.
Sorry, I will make the motion for items one through eight with the addition of those two items or friendly amendment to item number seven.
Could you, could you just, um, restate what those two amendments were? Because I, I'm trying to write them down.
Yes, one of them would be to include, uh, funding for the Sella Cultural Center. And the second one was to, um, seek funding for park projects off of the riverbed. I know, there, there's a couple there that are in our area, but I want to make sure that, you know, we are seeking that funding so that it will enhance our city.
So that, uh, item seven, just for the audience to follow along, is our legislative platform. It gives, uh, council gives general direction on broad areas for, um, that they support or that they say as a city we would oppose. Items like, one of the items in the legislative platform is the city in general, the council stated they oppose state directors that are, uh, any legislation the state makes that takes away local control, like says, cities can't decide how tall buildings are, how dense something is. The state comes up with those rules, um, sometimes in short order, we'll get a notice saying tomorrow the state's got this quick bill and they're gonna try to do these changes. Can we get some letters from cities to say you're against it? Well, we need permission from the council and often the meeting is ten days from when they're asking and there's no time. Legislative platform gives us approvals for certain categories. Uh, Councilmember Avalos is, uh, given an idea of a couple new additions. If approved during this process, we'll add them into that platform just to help everyone get an understanding of what we're doing here.
Yeah, I'll second differently.
Can I just add, I just wanted to, because I know you added PFAS, cleaning of PFAS water, right? It was, that was one of the things you elaborated a little bit on that because also a lot of the residents received something on the water. And so I think there were some concerns, there was some questions. And then you had a meeting with the Boy Scouts recently. So is that talk tied into that or is there, is that different issues there?
So we can give you whatever information you want, but for the purposes of legislative platform, uh, one of the items that's come across, um, nationwide in drinking water is PFAS, which has a super technical name that P F A S is the acronym. Uh, without going there, it's, you know, tiny microscopic pieces of plastic man-made that's infiltrated everyone's drinking water. Uh, all that gets tested regularly and there's certain limits that we're all testing. And in the Southern California area, those limits are rising. And in certain points, if it hits a certain point, um, not to the point where it's dangerous, it's gonna cause illness, but an alert, then you have to send notices. And so we just hit that area in our city. We still have space before it's, um, uh, a health crisis. But that being said, at the very same time, we are actively pursuing and designing a PFAS treatment plant, which will go in near Southgate Park, in Southgate Park, in order to treat our water and address this. But it's seven to eight million dollars, I believe, for it. We were getting funding together. We're very, we have, uh, we put aside money in the past, so we're going to address it. The legislative platform asks that we support any funding we can get for PFAS, but the notices are to let the community know that we've triggered a state level. Not, not, it's a notice, it's not fear, it's not scary. We will have a fix in place before anything approaches anywhere close to something that would be dangerous. Um, but to tie into the next question, the Boy Scout Huts, one of the possible locations for the PFAS treatment plant would be right, uh, kind of at the very north part of the Boy Scout Hut location. So, uh, Steve Costley and members of the Public Works team on Monday had a meeting with the Boy Scout group to educate them on the thoughts, the process, including them early in the design ideas. And we're seeing if there's a way that within this project, we could address a big gaping problem we have, um, is that the Boy Scout Huts, um, or we don't have any funding, Boy Scouts have no funding to replace the ancient facilities that they are, um, with failing roofs, wiring that was done by some dads back in the day. Um, nothing's to code, so we're worried about over time they'll become uninhabitable with no way to repair them. We may have an opportunity if we design the treatment plant in such a way that we may be able to adjust some of the huts and maybe do some replacements with some funding. So it's kind of a complex project, but it was a good meeting on Monday. We're on board to partner. Nobody's taking anything away from the Boy Scouts. We're actually trying to enhance what they have. So that was a long-winded.
Thank you.
Answer to those, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
And, and real quick, because I don't get too many times to, uh, go off here, but PFAS is perfluoric tanic acid. It's carbon to the eight. I won't give you the scientific, I got a C in chemistry in high school, okay? Uh, but I got an A in, in environmental, uh, studies. Uh, legal question, Mr. City Attorney. So, and, and I just want to make sure for the, uh, public to hear from you. So when we ask for, uh, like, on item number seven, that we're, um, adopting, uh, the legislative, uh, platform, uh, that some of the projects might be within five hundred feet of where we live, right, that we're pushing for money for? And we are still, uh, okay in voting on something like this? Can you clarify that for the community?
Uh, yeah, what you're, yeah, yes, Councilmember. What you're referring to is the conflict of interest under the FPPC rules that prohibit, uh, elected officials from participating in certain decisions. One of those decisions you cannot participate in is if the project lies within five hundred feet of your property. The concern there is that by voting on that project, you might be increasing the value of your own property and hence you would have a conflict of interest between what's in the good of the city versus what's in the good of your pocketbook. And so all this is tonight are just guidelines. If and when something specific comes before the council, then as you have in the past, you can elect to recuse yourself if it falls within those conflicted guidelines.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other question, council? All right, again, we do have, um, Chris here from, uh, FHC. So for the, the, um, the flag. And we're gonna take a vote and then I will continue with my comments. Go ahead. Uh, Rocka, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Stado?
Uh, yes, but I will be recusing myself, um, on item number three. Uh, Circle Park is within five hundred feet of where I live, so I will recuse myself on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Uh, yes, but I will be recusing myself from item number one, seeing that I am, uh, within five hundred feet of that property, so it better be a beautiful flag. I'll see it from my backyard.
And Mayor Davila? Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Uh, you might consider, uh, item four.
Also recusing?
Uh, I think that one might be, uh, twenty miles within five hundred feet of your.
Oh, you're absolutely right. I will recuse myself from item number four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. So with that, I'm looking forward to see that flag up there. So, um, I'm sure it's gonna look beautiful. Thank you. And there you go. That's where Southgate is at, right on the map, right?
It is, it is the American flag, right?
We wanna make sure it's the American flag. Do you wanna come up and say some words? You too, Randy. Oh, okay, Randy's only the supporter.
But, uh, on behalf of FHC and, and Glassworks, uh, you know, Glassworks has been around a lot longer than FHC, but six years ago, we.
Can we have your name, please, for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, uh, my name is Chris Hanstead and I'm the president and CEO of FHC. We operate on the Twenty Acre Campus down on the corner of Alameda and Firestone Boulevard. And, uh, six years ago, we kickstarted FHC, uh, in this wonderful town. I mean, I've got great relationships, mayor, city council members, officers, uh, we love our police. Uh, it's really, the relationships here are everything and thank you for your support. We're growing like you can't believe, uh, we'll be in New York by the end of the year with distribution centers there. We're in South Carolina, we're in Texas, we're in Washington. And, uh, we hire between Glassworks and FHC over two thousand people in this town. So we, uh, you have our support. We're not going anywhere and we're committed. And, uh, this flagpole is like, it's like a bookend on the, you know, whether it's Schultz Steel or all the way down to Alameda. We're gonna do our part to, uh, make it a great city.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll go on to warrants.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Grant total is five million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Cancellations are one, one, zero, seven, seven, eight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, any member here in the audience has any comments regarding our warrant register? Seeing none, any emails?
No emails.
No emails? What wishes of council?
Motion to approve.
I think Al Rios has a question.
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, on page, you know, seven of one, it says.
Ultimate House, are they still, are we still, I thought they were, we were done with that. I, I see some, some invoices there, um, is, are we, is that for counseling still? Or what's that for? Ultimate Health Services. I noticed that, uh, it's on page, uh, what's page one? And it says seven on one side.
We had a, uh, completion at the end of June of the final, uh, stage of that service. And so that was the final payment of that ARPA-funded program.
So it is part of that. Okay, that's the end. That's.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The service ended at the end of June, but the payment's coming a little bit later.
Did we ever get a report from them or anything on services? Because we gave them some good money. Maybe later on, we could get a report.
I, I know that they did come in and, and, and do a, a small, uh, presentation when they first were applying for the renewal, uh, of what they did the prior year. But that would be a good idea, just to have them come in and see what they did.
And I know, I just, just, just so you know, uh, on that note, counseling, the county did approach me to offer counseling in their community. They were looking for space. So I, I did mention it to Rob and so we're exploring some possible space. So just so you know that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? What wishes of council?
I'll second.
Yeah, first and second, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Stado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, just because the speakers came and I was looking at Stephen, I'm like, I know I have something to say, but my brain wasn't working at the time. So if I may, hopefully, um, I can get some answers. If not, then I know Steve and maybe our city attorney can enlighten me. So as a member of the city council, I am formally requesting a thorough review and clarification of the city's relationship with the Southeast Junior Athletic Association. This is in no way a personal. However, it is based on recent resident communication and troubling patterns regarding the organizational behaviors that I have significant concerns about, transparency, governance, and a potential legal and financial exposure to the city. It is unclear the separation between the city and the organization. There is no documentation that I have seen that clearly defines the operation or legal boundaries between the city and this nonprofit organization. The lack of clarity has caused confusion among some of our residents and appears to blur some of the important lines of responsibility. Notably, one of the residents reached out with several concerns regarding a refund referred. Apparently, they asked our council member, Vice Mayor, and he basically referred this individual to our Parks and Rec Director. Why was this referral made to you directly? Under what authority is this direction occurring? And what is the city's explanation when elected officials refer grievances to municipal staff? This referral, as a resulting staff involvement, suggests a level of city responsibility or endorsement that has never been formally discussed or approved by this council. It is truly an independent nonprofit, that was my understanding. Staff should not be involved in its internal businesses or disputes. Governance and insurance and legal protections. Given this organization's regular interactions with youth and children and operates within city-owned taxpayer-funding facilities, including office space, storage areas, snack areas, and fields, the city must protect itself from any liability and I am requesting the following information. What insurance policies are in place for this organization? Do these policies include hold harmless clause claiming the city or naming the city as an additional insured? Are there any sexual misconduct or preventions or liability coverages that this organization holds? Any errors and omissions coverage? Has the city reviewed these policies and verified that they are current, adequate, and enforceable? If a child is injured, like you indicated earlier, if a parent alleges financial wrongdoing or any, or holds anyone responsible for the occurrence, will the city be held liable and sued? These are serious and urgent questions that I feel must be answered with specificity. Unequal access to city resources. It has come to my attention that this organization appears to have access to a lot of city facilities at the park beyond what is afforded to other nonprofits, including the use of city buildings for board meetings in exclusive and ongoing offices, storage, snack bars, and other spaces. Use of silly city utilities presumably at no cost apparently involve city staff in a day-to-day issue. To my knowledge, no other nonprofit in the city receives this level of in-kind support without going through a formal agreement or a public vetting process or regular performance and compliance review. Why is this organization being treated differently? Financial and in-kind support. I am formally requesting a comprehensive accounting of any and all city resources, financial or in-kind, current or historical, provided to this organization, included but not limited rent or waiver fees of city-owned facilities, utility coverage, office storage spaces, playing fields, or recreation spaces, staff time and administrative services, any grant funding or any other forms of financial support. This information is essential to determine a true public cost to this relationship with this organization and its appropriateness under our city policy. And lastly, resident complaints and transparency. I would like to also access any communication from any parent or any other individual who have shared their concerns because they emailed us. have shared their concerns because they emailed us just recently. These complaints describe an unreasonable, difficult, and oblique process for resolving a simple issue like a refund. This falls short of the standard of accountability and accessibility expected from any organization operating that has the public support. So I would just like to request a written response clarifying the city's legal and operational relationship with the JAA, documentation of any formal agreements, MOUs, insurance policies currently in effect, clarification regarding the referral from our council member, Vice Mayor, of a resident to a city staff, a full inventory of public resources currently allocated to the organization, and a summary of any oversight, reporting, or auditing mechanisms that are in place or lack thereof. I also recommend that this issue be placed, hopefully in the future City Council agenda, to allow a full discussion, community input, and reassessment of the appropriateness of the relationship. Thank you. And this is only being brought because of the emails that I have received from this specific resident and a group of parents that is concerning to me, because they are at the park, they are dealing with our youth, and like you indicated, Steve, with that gentleman, they're leagues. This is a nonprofit that has had access, and in no way is this personal. This is more for governance and transparency and accountability to our community.
Councilwoman Avalos, I would just direct the spirit of those requests over to the City Manager, because of the City Manager form of government, as opposed to having anyone from the council direct staff to do that, there are limitations in our municipal code, and to the extent you're reading from something that might have those inquiries, I'd ask you just to pass that on to the City Manager, and they can, you know, take it under submission.
I will also add, I appreciate the concerns, and please do forward them. Also encourage you at any time to, as I think you do in most cases, just directly work with me versus, say, having to use this forum for those kind of initial conversations, because I don't believe this has been brought up before, so that could probably streamline this in the future if you'd like. But I would say in the, for the amount of work that's being involved there and the request to have it come to a future meeting, typically I'd look for a second to get an understanding of the, putting it on the agenda, and also the amount of work that I'm going to have staff dedicate to this, so I think that would help me to have that before we jump into this. But I also wanted to preface as well that in the over 18 months I've been here, I did see that one email, but I've also monitored concerns from soup to nuts throughout the community of all sorts of issues, business, parks, community, nonprofits, and the JAA is not something I've seen a history or concerned about, and I understand you have a concern, but I certainly would say that this seems to be a very, very rare occurrence that hasn't occurred in the time I'm there, so we can certainly, I guess, if we have a second, do all this research, but I'd need a second to take this on.
Yeah, and, and again, it's a special meeting, Councilman Avalos, so we're limited by what we can add on or vote or approve on right now. This comes up, perhaps you can have a discussion with the City Manager, and we can bring this up at a future City Council meeting, while we're not constrained by the rules attributed to special City Council.
Okay, so with that, can I make, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And just to remember that we are adjourning in memory of Rigoberto Duran, and I did say Abel, but it's not Abel, it's Juvi, Juvenal. It's his uncle, too, so, yeah, okay. All right, we are adjourned. I want to.